The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Monday, October 5th, 2020, as well as posting on this city's website. Clerk, can I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
Present.
Councilman Good?
Present.
Councilman McKenna? Councilman McCray?
Present.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Present.
Vice President Armadi?
Here.
Excuse me. Thank you. We presented minutes for three meetings: the combined meeting of October 13th, 2020, the combined meeting of November 9th, 2020, and the special meeting on November 30th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes as presented, or if there are any questions or additions, you can give those. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the minutes have been approved. All right, we'll move to unfinished business. Please know that the reorganization meeting has been tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. We'll now move to consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 2020-22 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-22 is an ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for the South Second Street Youth Center redevelopment area. I hereby certify that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. As customary, we are using the hand icon, raise your hand, using that. Remind me what the caller, the callers, I think hit star something, can remind me of that. For callers?
I believe it's star nine?
Star nine. For anyone calling in that would like to speak on this ordinance. Any members of the public?
There is no one with their hand raised.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
Moved, Council President.
Have a second?
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
You can read in final passage. Thank you. Clerk, please read MC 2020-23 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-23 is an ordinance to amend Article 13, 171320 of the Plainfield Land Use Ordinance revising the fee schedule for payments to professionals, with the review of applications to the Plainfield Planning Board and Board of Adjustments for Ask for Fees. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020.
Thank you, sir. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
And I need to correct myself, it was star six, so if you are on a phone and you just dialed in, it's star six to raise your hand.
Thank you.
No one has their hand raised?
Okay. Hearing and seeing no members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
So moved.
I don't think I'd close public hearing on this ordinance, so may I have a motion to close public hearing on this motion? A second?
Moved.
Second.
Moving on second, and now may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage. Sir, clerk, please read MC 2020-24 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-24 is an ordinance to rename East Third Street between Town Road and Leland Avenue to Milk Campbell Way. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020.
Our virtual floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak Reminded to hit the hand icon to indicate you'd like to speak, or star six if you are on the phone. I see we have at least one person that raised their hand, I believe.
Yes, Nancy Peewar, 1129 Merle Avenue. I think this ordinance is a long time coming. However, I wish they had mentioned that Milk Campbell was a graduate of Plainfield High School. I think it would have gone a long way to encourage students that played for high school and let them know that he was a proud graduate of Plainfield High School, and also won the silver medal in 1952 against Bob Mathias as a student at Plainfield High School. My only other concern is that you make sure you notify the OIC, the post office, because people do have, sorry about that, that was outside my house. People have a tendency to change their addresses, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people that are probably going to want to put Milk Campbell Way at their address, so I think not to confuse the post office, you should just at least notify the OIC, the postmaster, that the city did this. And I think it's a great tribute to Milk Campbell.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Eva Bar. If the clerk can note that, make sure we don't have any issues in the future. Is there anyone else in the public?
Nope, that was the only person with their hand raised.
Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, this ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call, please. It's moved by Councilman Good, seconded by Councilwoman Davis. Councilmembers Davis?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted. Thank you. Clerk, please read MC 2020-25 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-25 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Article 19, Section 8b, fees and fines with updated rates. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
No one has their hand raised?
Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved. Second.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
No.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
No.
Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
Five in favor to approve resolution has been adopted. Thank you, clerk, please read MC 2020-26 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-26 is an ordinance to amend Section 518, renewal of dog for license, license for dogs of the Plainfield Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this was published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020.
The virtual floor is now open for any member of the public who would like to speak
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Sekita Cooper, Plainfield Business Owner. Simply wanted to ask or just clarify when this ordinance will take effect, as I did receive paperwork regarding renewal applications. I can also say that I did receive feedback from some other residents who also got the license application renewal, and there were several inconsistencies regarding the names that were placed outside of the envelope. You know, one of the person's names was listed as, let's just say, Joe Resident, and this is a person who has applied for many years. You have their information, so I would just ask that you look into that, as well as just kind of want to get clarification on how the process is going to be. And I'm happy to know that you're going to be extending this for a few years now instead of every year, so just kind of wanted some clarification on that. If there's something on the website that you can direct me to, or someone can send me a link after this, that would be great, so that I can share the information. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to have the director just speak a little bit about that, and doesn't have to be, we can wait till the, make sure everybody got their public comments in, but I'd give the director an opportunity to speak about that. Let's see if we have anyone else that wants to speak first before. Any director interrupts public comment. See, we have someone else as well. Okay, Nicole Mingo-Horton, unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record.
Nicole Mingo-Horton, 1366 St. Nicholas Boulevard. I too received my renewal paperwork in the mail, but I was a bit surprised because I thought that the licensing was going to be available for online renewals this year. And it's, it said that you can mail it in, but it did not make clear whether or not you are still required to send a self-addressed stamped envelope in order to receive your licenses and the paperwork back. And the other thing about renewing through the mail that I don't understand is, if you're licensing the same animals for multiple years, why you have to send a spade certificate every single year, along with an application, and the rabies certificate, and then they send all the paperwork back, including the application? It just doesn't make sense to me that, I mean, a dog is spayed or neutered one time, so why you have to continuously send that information in, just doesn't make sense to me. So I can get some clarification on that, but seeing that we are in the situation we are with this pandemic, it would have been much better if this could have been done completely online, as opposed to having to send it through the mail to do the renewals.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Horton. We have Fran now. State your name and ask an address for the record. Fran, are you there?
I apologize, Francie Moore, 975 Frontwood Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, 07062. I also have a question around dog licensing. I had an issue as well. When I mailed in the application, it got lost somehow, so I had to redo everything and send everything in, so that led me to contact the director directly, and I had to drop it off, you know, manually. So is there any way that, I don't know, that we can kind of certify that we can get these dog licenses back on time and not get lost? Because it's very inconvenient. Online would be great, but I mean, I guess you guys are doing what you can do.
Thank you for your question and your participation, Fran. See if we can get the director in. Some of these questions, obviously residents have some concerns about those, so.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of unmuted participants here, and you know, the last, Ms. Moore was kind of cut out a little bit and hesitated a little bit because there's noise and background, and somebody sounds like they're scuba diving. Can we get people to mute when they're not talking?
Yes. It's good advice. Anyone else? From the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Currently, no one else has their hand raised.
Okay, Director Brown, if you don't mind, just chiming in on some of, on the issues that you heard, and you know, give as full as explanation as you can.
Sure. So the ordinance speaks to being able to do it for three years, which we don't have an opportunity to do right now. In the letter, we did mention that the online access will be done in January, when the renewal takes place. We are still working out, well, on our end, we're still working out some technical challenges with getting, and I think I'm saying this right, the two systems to talk fully, and I think that should be done relatively soon. What we had planned on doing is the same individuals that we notified via letter, we will send them a postcard, and we will put it online when we do social media, letting them know that it's up and running. Hopefully, we will have that within the next two weeks, so that when January comes, people will, residents will be able to put that information online. There was a question around the mailing and accuracy. I'll have to check on that, I did take the name down, and I will follow up. Anybody who has any questions, please follow up. We've not gotten any complaints so far, except for the challenges that we just received now, but I would certainly talk to the director of that division and make sure the list is accurate. You know, if there's a mistake, we will certainly correct it. And also, the goal is always to make it as efficient as possible, and so by putting it online and streamlining, that's certainly something that we have been working to do for quite some time. It's not perfect, but we are certainly trying to get as close to it as possible.
So there also was a question about sending in the spade or the neuter's certificate on a yearly basis? Is there a necessity for that? Or is there a way to do that?
I'm not going to speak to that right now, because I think there may be a law that reads that we have to send each year, but I'm not too sure. And so I will find out and get back to the president and council about that. I think that may not be, I think that it may be a requirement, but again, I need to double check that.
Okay, well, thanks for taking a look into that. We'll see what the results are, and let the public know perhaps at the next meeting.
I'll try to see if I can get it from you.
Thank you, thank you, director. All right, hearing and seeing no other members of the public, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, this ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, I was doing as I was asked. Okay, yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
And Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this is the ordinance been adopted. Thank you, clerk, please read MC 2020-27 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2020-27 is an ordinance providing for special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 48453M to fund an anticipated deficit in operations for the 2020 fiscal year of the city, directly attributable to COVID-19. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on November 19th, 2020. I'm sorry, December 3rd, 2020.
Thank you. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Okay, hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
So moved.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Members Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Good, you're on mute.
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hakaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, ordinance has been adopted in second reading and final passage. Thank you. We will now move to public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances this evening. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Once unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Berwinkle, you're on mute, you could speak.
Hi, this is Mary Berwinkle, 1785 Sleepy Hollow Lane. Hope everybody is safe and healthy. On the ordinance about the residency waiver for one of, for a new employee, I don't know the employee, congratulations to the person for getting a job, but I'm just wondering at this point, like, how do those jobs get advertised? Did anybody from Plainfield apply? I don't know who this, you know, I don't know who this person is, and I'm sure he's fine, but I'm just, I'm sure there are people in Plainfield in this pandemic who probably have those qualifications, and I'm just wondering how the thing gets advertised. Thank you.
Thank you for your question and concern. At the conclusion of comments regarding these resolutions, I will have either our Corporation Council or our city manager address that question.
If you're on a phone and want to speak, it is star six, as a reminder.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'm going to give, Abby or Dave, would you prefer to take that regarding the waiver?
I'm happy, I'm happy to take it. So this position was advertised in multiple places beside, all of our positions are advertised on the Plainfield website. This one was also advertised in the League of Municipalities website, which is a, reaches a broad base of, obviously, of New Jersey residents looking for municipal jobs. And that's because this one is a very specialized skill set, this job. There were, I believe, 17 applicants, three of which were Plainfield residents, and this is a competitive civil service job, so it requires a certain amount of years in a specific field, doing specific work, and if you don't have that experience, you will not be able to get on the civil service certification for permanency in this job. So therefore, we can only hire an applicant who meets that civil service criteria. As a municipality, we have no say in those, in that criteria. These are civil service jobs, they come with their own job descriptions and their own experience requirements. You know, we get no wiggle room in that, and so we were only able to hire an applicant who met the civil service job requirements and the job experience level, and there were no Plainfield residents who met. In fact, I believe the person that we hired was the only person of all the 17 applicants who met those requirements. I'm happy to answer any other questions on that.
Thank you for answering that, Abby, that's fine.
Okay.
Are there any comments from councilmembers regarding resolutions R 329-30 to R 330-20? I think it should be R 329-20. Any questions from councilmembers? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution, those resolutions are approved. Mr. Clerk, will you please proceed with the remaining resolutions?
Resolution 33120, authorizing an appropriation for Koloji Simmons.
Are there any questions from councilmembers? Hearing and seeing none, is there a?
Yeah, Council President, I just have one question really quickly, that this is the third allocation we did, and last month, we did one in addition for litigation defense work, so we're kind of blowing past our budgets a lot. Now, last month, this wasn't for the same firm, it was for Mr. Montello's firm, but you know, at what point do we figure out how we get control over these so that we can stay within our budgets?
Corporation counsel, please.
Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify, this is not a third appropriation for Cologie Simmits. This is a second appropriation. The original appropriation was for $10,000 for the year for the firm of Cologie Simmits. This is a request for an additional $5,000. Cologie Simmits, as well as doing litigation defense work, also acts as a hearing officer for the city of Plainfield on departmental hearings. So as required by civil service, any individual who is charged with a disciplinary action in excess of five days is entitled to a departmental hearing. As we were required to give them that hearing, we need a hearing officer. The Cologie Simmits firm has acted as our hearing officer this year, and doing so based on the the amount of cases that they've been handling, require an additional $5,000 to complete the year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at the resolution, and there was R 005-20 and R 211-20, and this is R 331-20. There, there was January 21st, 2020, July 13th, 2020, and now this one. So there, this is the third.
Councilman McGinn, I certainly I would have to review that. I, in my review of my records, I only saw this as the second appropriation for Cologie Simmits for for the additional $5,000. I did not see a July, in my records, in my review, did not see an additional appropriation for Cologie Simmits, other than the original one in January, and then the one tonight.
You know, and I brought this up last last month, too, is that, you know, I, it's kind of, it's humorous when we do a resolution that says not to exceed, but then we just do another resolution that lets it exceed. And there are instances where obviously things come up and we need to add additional funding. But, you know, I think at some point, we need to look and see why. And I get that that they're they're necessary for for civil servant defense hearings and that sort of thing. But are we having too many of those? And why are we having too many of those? And what, how do we compare with other municipalities of similar size with this sort of thing? And how do we do things differently so that we're not doing as many of these so that we have, you know, happier employees and we're not paying as much on attorneys? And, you know, I don't want to think a lot of attorneys, but they, between them and engineers, we write a lot of checks to them. So that's my point.
Any other questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 33220 authorizing approval to execute an agreement with extra duty solutions.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
Director West or Director Burgess, I'm not really sure which one of you would address this, but can you just explain why a service like this is necessary? And also, can you explain how there is no fiscal impact to this?
Yes, I guess I will address that. And if I leave something out, Director Burgess can come in and and help me. But this is a service that's currently managed in-house. You know, we use police officers to handle extra duty assignments. And we also have the responsibility for paying the officers, you know, whether we've collected money from the vendors or not. You know, what happens with this extra duty solutions is that we will no longer be responsible for, you know, dealing with the vendors and collecting. You know, the any any fees earned will be forwarded to us by extra duty solutions before any checks are rendered. Plus, the officers that are currently involved in administering the program will be back in the field, you know, and picking up other assignments. So administratively, it's a, it's a win for the city. Financially, it takes a liability away from us, though we are responsible for ultimately paying the officers. And, you know, extra duty assignments take place all the time, whether it's road assignments or restaurants or any other jobs. We, we have our officers working thousands of hours in extra duty work.
Director West, do you mind if I if I just add on to that?
Right ahead.
So Councilwoman Davis, I just want to make sure that all the council members understand because it's a very unusual setup with cops who do off-duty work. The city pays them, and because of the Fair Labor Standards Act, we have to pay them within a two-week period, just like anybody working any job has to be paid within two weeks, even though we don't necessarily have to collect the money from the vendor within those two weeks. So PSENG might pay us three months down the road, but we still have to make sure that those officers are paid within two weeks of completing their job. So it creates a large liability for the city, fronting money for the vendors before before we are paid. So by by delegating that out to a vendor who's going to handle that for us, it's it takes the liability off of our shoulders, which is a big benefit to us. And to answer your question about the financial, how it's not a financial impact, this vendor will charge a seven percent, I believe it's 7%, a 7% fee to the vendors who are using the off-duty cops. So PSENG will pay a 7% administrative fee to off-duty solutions, and that will cover their costs. So we're not paying them, they're getting paid directly by the vendor, that 7% fee.
So I have another question. So how do we know that having that 7% fee won't deter people from wanting to use off-duty officers is my first question? And my second question is, so Mr. West basically said that we have a problem with collecting from those vendors, from those people who are using off-duty officers. So what are we doing? What did we do to try to remedy it before we decided to go to a third-party vendor?
No, I didn't say that we had a problem. We do have a responsibility. That responsibility is no longer a burden of the city. So I think the key point to understand is that we were using police officers, and in some cases, even ordered a control to stay on top of the the funding. The vendors are supposed to put the funds in escrow in advance, and that becomes an exercise that, you know, administratively, we put a lot of time in. We no longer have to do that. And, you know, will it have an impact on the number of jobs that that get awarded to the officers? We haven't found that to be the case in other municipalities. This is not a, a new process. You know, this has been going on for a number of years throughout the country.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 33320 authorizing the city of Plainfield to join Bergen Municipal Employee Benefits Fund.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes, I do.
Councilman?
So for 2021, then, we, I know last year, we were going to go with the state program, but that didn't work out because of the, I just lost my word, the one card or the smart card or the?
Jeffords card.
Jeffords card, there we go. So this year, we're going to use, we're going to, we're going to opt into the Bergen County Health Program for our health insurance. Is that what I'm understanding? Like a co-op, but through their program?
The answer to that is yes. We are looking at a number of different options with regard to health benefits in 2021. One of the options we have before us is to go into a health insurance fund, a HIF, you know, with Bergen Municipal for Medicare Advantage, you know, participants. This is only with regard to our Medicare Advantage participants, not something available to a citywide.
Okay, so these, these would be for the retirees, not for the, for the existing working?
Yes, it is not for the active employees. It's for the, basically, the over 65 population.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any additional, Councilwoman Davis?
So on the resolution, well, in the documents, it says that we have an opportunity to save in the area of 500,000. How do we come to that number? And do we have a more concrete number of what we're going to save? Because in the area seems a little vague.
Well, this is, again, this is, this is limited to the Medicare participants. And how do we get the derivative number? We look at the proposal from the HIF compared to what we're seeing from, in fact, I shouldn't say yet, from the HIF compared to what we have from Aetna, and that that generates the difference. And so this is just a difference in the fees that we would be paying, you know, for the Medicare Advantage group.
Thank you.
Any, any additional questions? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 33420 appointing officials as commissioners for the Bergen Municipal Employee Benefits Fund.
Any questions from council members regarding that? Do we have a motion in a second?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 334-20 is approved.
Resolution 335 authorizing the mayor to execute the indemnity and trust agreement required to join with the Bergen Municipal Employee Benefits Trust Fund.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 335-20 is approved.
Resolution 33620 authorizing approval to apply and accept grant funds for COVID-19 expenses.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
So how does this grant affect the deficit? Well, I don't know, maybe I'm not using the right words, but the potential deficit we talked about at the special meeting, does this grant help remedy some of that?
The answer to that would be yes, it would. Not the, you know, remember, if you're referring to the ordinance that was, that came forward, that is talking from the revenue end. You know, so we've got a revenue end, we've got the appropriation side, too, in the way of expenses. So it will, it will close some of the gap, but not all.
Thank you.
Other questions? My colleagues, hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 336-20 is approved.
Resolution 33720 authorizing the issuance of 900,000 in special emergency bills.
Any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 337-20 is approved.
Resolution 33820 authorizing approval to amend the calendar year 2020 municipal budget to insert items of special revenue.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 338-20 is approved.
Resolution 33920 approving transfers between the CY20 operations of the general fund, appropriations of the general.
Any questions or comments from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 339-20 is approved.
Resolution 34020 authorizing a refund due to a state tax appeal.
Any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
I'm moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 340-20 is approved.
Resolution 34120 authorizing approval to cancel the 2020 and 2021 taxes billed due to 100% disabled veteran exemption.
Any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 341-20 is approved.
34220 granting an extension to complete a tax sale foreclosure.
Any questions from council members or comments? Looking, hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? 342-20 is approved.
34320 authorizing acceptance of 16 bids to purchase certain properties owned by the city of Plainfield.
Any questions or comments from council members? I'd just like to congratulate the directors who put this this auction on. The, they raised quite a sizable sum of money selling city-owned property here. And it, it, it sort of supports that, that, you know, we're doing, that Plainfield is on the rise, tremendous interest in, in property in Plainfield, as evidenced by this, as well as the real estate market generally. But just congratulations on our successful auction. Can I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 34420 granting free parking in the central business district.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
I'm glad to see that even in the midst of a pandemic, we're still granting free parking, especially in our central business district, because we know that during this pandemic, small businesses have been hit the hardest. And I remember in one of the earlier meetings we had this year, Director Jackson spoke to how a lot of businesses would probably close due to this pandemic. So hopefully, with this free parking, it really just brings that necessary business to the businesses in our central business district. So I'm glad to see that this resolution has made it to the agenda once again this year.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Yeah, I'd just like to echo those comments for Councilwoman Davis. But, but just to go further is, you know, I, maybe next year, I'd rather see this on a November meeting and do it maybe even a little earlier to give people opportunity, maybe do some Black Friday shopping in our town with the benefit of that parking, you know? They'll, they'll get a couple of weeks this year, and that's a good thing. But, you know, the, the giving person in me wishes to do a little more, although I know that affects our, the bottom line for the city. But that would just be my suggestion. But hey, I'm only one vote. Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution three forty-five twenty, authorizing the Plainfield Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency law enforcement program.
Any questions from council members regarding this ordinance, resolution?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, go ahead.
Um, do we know exactly what type of equipment would be acquired in this?
In the body of the resolution, it gives you an example of some of the items that, um, we can, uh, get from them. Most of it is non-military. Um, however, we already have the hummers, the dare hummer is one of those items, so regardless if we, um, in those items that we get is still their property. So regardless if we don't get anything else, we are supposed to do a resolution for that in order to continue to keep the property that we do currently have. We had other property a couple of years ago, and, but I believe everything that we were not using was given back to them, with the exception of, uh, the hummer that we, the hummers that we have. Does that help to answer? Some of the items could be office furniture, it could be equipment, uh, different things like that. But there is a detail in the body of the resolution.
Other questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Move.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution three forty-six twenty, uh, awarding a contract for surveillance security cameras for the.
Are there any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three forty-six dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three forty-seven twenty, authorizing the acceptance with agreement with the Plainfield Fire Department and Connolly and Hickey Historical Architects.
Are there any questions from my council colleagues?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, just to be clear, um, was this firehouse a part of a redevelopment plan at one point in time?
I believe it's up to.
You, you, you're talking about this, you're asking about the redevelopment plan from when? Or you asking a question about this study?
Well, I was asking if this firehouse on South Avenue, uh, has been or is a part of a redevelopment plan.
Director Jackson, uh, I don't think that it's part of, well, I would have to check to see if it's part of. I would have to check to see if it's part of a redevelopment plan, Councilwoman Davis, but I do know it is a historical firehouse.
So President?
Yes, Mayor.
Um, I would like to add that the firehouse on South Avenue is not for sale, is not going anywhere, is not gonna be a restaurant for anyone. It will continue to be a historic asset of the city of Plainfield.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from council colleagues or the mayor? Okay, uh, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, four, three forty-seven dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three four eight twenty, authorizing the purchase of a paratech combo trailer for the Plainfield Fire Department.
Any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved, Council President.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution three forty-nine twenty, authorizing the award of a professional services contract to Remington and Vernick Engineers.
Any questions from my council colleagues?
I, I have one, but first of all, I'm in favor of reversing, you know, changing that traffic pattern there. Because when you're at City Hall, all roads lead you out of town, and you have to drive around in circles to get back the other way, but it really costs a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to research and change the traffic pattern.
Yes, for all the study be done and involve councilmen outlined in the resolution, yes it does, uh, to do that, but.
I read through all that, I was just wondering if all of that is necessary to change the flow and re-strike?
Yes, it is pretty much, the traffic, everything that they're doing for the control, uh, it's, it's there, but again, it may be reduced, this is a number that they put in professional services, see what happens if it goes on, but this was just something to make sure it's, it's quite a bit of work involved with the.
Was this done as an RFP by the, the planning, the planners? Put together the, the requirements and, and put it out in RFP to Remington, or did Remington come to us with what they thought we should do?
Remington go out to look at it, and they came to us with what should be done over there by looking it over.
Sure they had a good list, okay.
Any other questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved. You're gonna unmute yourself, Major. Mr. Clerk? I, I don't hear you so well.
Resolution, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Resolution three fifty twenty, authorizing approval for a lien placement for property cleanup.
Any questions from council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, can we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three fifty dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-one twenty, authorizing approval to execute an agreement with the Union County Department of Human Services.
Any questions from council members?
I guess.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, I just want to applaud the senior center for continuing its work even in the midst of the pandemic and making sure that they remain in contact with seniors, especially when we know so many, uh, feel isolated during this time, so kudos to them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three fifty-one dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-two twenty, authorizing approval to hang banners for the announcement of seasonal programs.
Any questions from council members? Here, hearing and seeing none, uh, can we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Thank you.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution three fifty-three twenty, authorizing, directing the Plainfield Planning Board to conduct an area in need of redevelopment investigation in the city of Plainfield.
Any questions from council member colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution three five four twenty, authorizing the installation of awnings within the public right of way.
Any questions or comments from council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three fifty-four dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-five twenty, authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the city of Plainfield and PSCNG.
Are there any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three fifty-five dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-six twenty, authorizing a residency waiver for Daniel A. White to serve as a principal planning aide.
Are there any questions or comments from council members?
I, um, I think one question i- is, uh, not being, not knowing that or hearing that title, is this a new position in the planning department?
It's a new title in the planning department. Originally, um, uh, Rosalynn Miller, uh, supported the boards, and her title was, uh, stenographer secretary, uh, which is kind of inconsistent with most municipalities for this particular function. Uh, there used to be a title called land use administrator in civil service, but now it is principal planning aide. And that allows the person to be able to review applications and also be able to check for completeness. Right now, the planner does all of the completeness reviews here in the city of Plainfield.
Well, I'm glad, I, I appreciate that, thank you. So he's gonna take on the responsibilities of Roz plus some additional things he can do because of his background?
Yes.
And I'm glad we're killing the title stenographer. Never, haven't heard that in forever.
Yeah. Tell me about it. Okay, any, uh, additional questions or comments from, uh, council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
Um, so DA Levinson, um, you said at the beginning of the meeting that the position was posted on the city website as well as the legal municipalities. Um, is this standard practice for all, uh, municipal postings? Um, do they always go the legal municipalities, or where can you go, um, if they're interested in municipal positions?
Oh, it's not, it's actually not standard practice, it's, we only, because it costs money to post on the league, so we try only to do that for jobs that have special requirements, like this one had, um, a special amount of years and a very specific, doing very specific duties. So anything that we know is gonna be a little bit harder to get applicants for due to the civil service requirements, we'll, we'll post it on the league, that's a, that's a pretty typical place to post it. Um, but generally, they're posted, uh, just on the Plainfield website, and they're physically posted in City Hall and in the annex.
Thank you.
I would just add, uh, Councilwoman Davis, we did also post it on the New Jersey Planning Official site, and so for planning positions such as planners, zoners, or planning aides, we go to these sites, uh, as well to find qualified candidates.
Thank you, I'm not taking issue with where it was posted, um, I mean, it is what it is. I just wanted to make sure that members of the public who weren't listening or watching know where, um, city job vacancies are posted, um, because I know that is a question or that is a request that people ask for a lot, like, hey, I need a job. And so now they know where they can go to look for one at the city of Plainfield, so thank you.
Yes, definitely, the plainfieldnj.gov, the positions are always posted there.
Ca- Council President, I just have one, one more question, just because, uh, you made a comment. Would, how many years of, of, uh, uh, professional work in this field does the job require?
Uh, requires two ye- it requires two years' experience, and it also has education as a substitute for some years of experience.
Okay, so he, because he, he didn't do two years full-time in Newark as that, as the intern, because he just graduated from, from, uh, Champaign-Urbana, um, in twenty twenty, so he was, I'm assuming he was intern during summers and things like that?
Yes, he, uh, worked for Newark, uh, uh, for a couple of summers, and, uh, he most recently was still interning with the Newark.
The resume kind of implies two years' experience, like a full two years, not partial, but.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from, uh, council members? If not, we'll, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition or abstentions? Resolution three fifty-six twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-seven twenty, authorizing the release of performance bonds and cash deposits.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution three fifty-seven dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three fifty-eight twenty, increasing the award of national service contract to Penotti Associates.
Any questions from council members? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three fifty-eight dash twenty is approved.
Three fifty-nine twenty, authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health to support abatement activities.
Are there any questions from my council colleagues?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
Director Brown, for the benefit of the public, can you kind of explain this resolution a little bit more?
This is a valid, uh, grant application with the Department of Community Affairs. It allows us to, uh, do remediations in, on homes that may have, well, that the children who are tested may have high lead levels. We then go into the home to try to find out what has caused those high levels, and then we try to fix it. Uh, it is a grant, and we probably serve, we'll probably be able to service between ten and fifteen homes, depending on the cost. Because each, each homemade cost differently.
Thank you, so if someone is concerned about lead levels in their home, how would they go about contacting your office or letting you know?
So this grant wouldn't address that, because it is done through, uh, pediatricians. So if a child comes up with a high lead level at their pediatrician by law, they have to go through a notification process. We then get that notification process at the health office, and then we send out, uh, we, we contract with a nurse at Rutgers, and they go and speak to them, and there's a whole process about getting someone into their homes. If they certainly have a high lead level, they can contact, uh, the Division of Health, and we will direct them how they should proceed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council colleagues? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution three sixty twenty, authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health for childhood lead prevention.
Any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three sixty dash twenty is approved.
Resolution three sixty-one twenty, authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health, local public health capa- for the local health, health, local public health capacity program.
Um, Twister?
Yeah.
Are there any questions from my council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opositions or abstentions? Three sixty-one dash twenty is approved.
Three sixty-two twenty, recognizing December first, twenty twenty as World Day.
Any question from council members? Hearing none, let me have, entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Three sixty-two dash twenty is approved. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to add and reconsider, uh, resolution three sixty-three dash twenty to this evening's agenda, uh, which is a councilmanic resolution conveying thanks and sincere best wishes to our colleague, Mr. Elton Armadi, including his services as Plainfield's councilman at large.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any questions or comments from council members?
I just want to say that I am a little sad that Councilman Armadi, uh, won't be joining us on the council anymore. Um, Councilman Armadi started, uh, just six months before I did on the council, but we were able to grow together, um, as council members. Um, we were able to bounce ideas and thoughts off of each other. And while we did not always agree, um, on decisions and stuff, it did not stop us from becoming friends and also just really hearing, um, different perspectives and sometimes, you know, cutting up on our side of the dais. So he will be missed, his bright and bubbly personality and just the ability to call him a colleague and a friend, I am honored.
Council President?
Yes.
Just wanna say it was an honor and a privilege to share the dais with you, Councilman Armadi. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Council President, I would just like to say thank you to Councilman Armadi. Um, you are, uh, going to do great things as you continue to do, uh, what you're being called to do in the community and on your job. It was very nice knowing you and I still hope we, uh, exchanged some kind of ideas over Facebook or whatever, but I am so glad to have met you and worked with you, Elton. Thank you.
Councilman President? Councilman McCray, I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman Armadi for giving his dedicated service. He's a great individual who had a lot to offer and still has a lot to offer and I wish him much success in his future endeavors and hope that he will remain committed to making Plainfield a better place through his service that, and no matter what way he can, um, render that service to the citizens of Plainfield. Thank you, Elton Armadi.
Council President, I'd just like to say to Elton that, um, you and, and your parents should be proud of, of the service that you, um, made to, uh, to Plainfield and you and I were not always on the same side of votes, but we were, um, from time to time, um, which is how it's supposed to go. But, um, I, I think we're very proud and so should your parents and, and thank you for, for your service to the community.
Yeah. I find, yes.
Yeah, if I may join the chorus of compliments that are being paid to Councilor Armadi, I would like to thank him for the great work that he did in serving the residents of Plainfield. And because of his support, we have been able to move several projects through the pipeline. And so I appreciate the work and the support that Councilor Armadi gave, um, during the years that he has served on the council, a job well done. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman, uh, Armadi, my, my vice president, you know, it's been a pleasure over this year serving with you, uh, you being my VP there in the trenches as we decide and make, um, you know, well-informed decisions on the behalf of residents. Uh, you've been an excellent sounding board, uh, you've been a partner in, uh, in, in doing everything that we, we've done this year and I know that this is just the beginning for you. Uh, I know we haven't seen the last of you, uh, councilmen. Um, big things are coming, uh, and, and you just know that whatever you decide to do next, that you have my full support, um, and any resource that I have, you have as well. And I hope to, you know, continue to be friends, um, uh, as, as we move forward. And hopefully you, once COVID is over, maybe we can work out in the gym again. We've been trying to do that, but COVID kind of put a, uh, abrupt, uh, end to much in-person stuff, but, you know, uh, I look forward to, to continuing the friendship for years to come and supporting you in all your future endeavors.
And, you know, I really do wanna thank everybody, um, particularly the mayor who put my name forward in June of twenty eighteen, um, when the vacancy came and Rebecca left us for the, um, the commissioner board, uh, which is what they call it now. Um, and then Charles McCray, who, um, he was my council president at the time. He really was a good mentor, um, and an early backer of mine. So Charles, I really do, um, thank you for everything. Uh, my colleagues, thank you for your support in bringing me on, as well as the directors. I feel like the directors are really top-notch. Um, if there was anything that I ever needed, I reached out and you guys, you know, did, um, a phenomenal job. Um, the city clerk's office, AJ, you guys, like, the city, the, the council cannot operate without an office like yours. So I thank you guys for always making sure that we're prepared and, you know, had everything that we needed. Um, I do wanna thank the residents of the city of Plainfield for really, you know, whether they voted for me or not, allowing me to have, um, this opportunity. Um, there's a lot of consequential things that I did get to vote on that, you know, I really took pride in and wanted to kind of reemphasize. So one was, um, reorganizing the city government to make it more modern and more accountable. Um, we voted to approve, uh, the city's first flag in our hundred fifty-year history. Um, we voted to confirm the first female police director in our city's history, which I think it might be the county's history as well. Um, our own director, Lisa Burgess, um, the many development projects that we had as well as, um, you know, in the fourth ward where I live. And I think that the biggest was, um, the first zero tax increase, which was this year. So, you know, given all that I've accomplished with my colleagues, the administration, I do thank, um, the residents and, um, wish everybody good health going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved, Council President.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opositions or abstentions?
Hmm.
Hmm. This resolution is approved. Congra- okay, uh, we now move to general comments. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. If you wish to speak, hit the hand icon, you'll be recognized, give your name and address for the record. The floor is now open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Saketa Cooper, Plainfield. I just have two things. And it pertains to the website again. The first thing I just want to suggest is back when COVID first began, uh, in March, I wanna say maybe April or May, Mayor Map started doing some Facebook Lives where we would have engagement and participation, uh, regarding what was going on within the city. I am asking that we perhaps do some type of, um, invitation on Facebook or create a Facebook event so that we can click interested. And I don't know logistically how the law is, but it would be great if it could be streamed, um, just like we did with Mayor Map and his Facebook Lives. Secondly, when it comes to the website, since we were talking about animal control this evening, I of course went to the website again, looked under the animal control tab and couldn't help but notice that we still have the Animal Humane Society of Newark. I'm not sure if that's the exact title, but it's on Evergreen Avenue. The council voted unanimously to start using PAZ, um, the Plainfield Animal Humane Society, which is on Rock Avenue, July twenty twenty. Here we are in December and we still have old information on the website. And if someone had perhaps clicked on that website and was looking for their pet, they would have called Newark first, which would have delayed them in possibly retrieving their animal. So if we could please take some time and review the outdated website. I know I sound like a broken record. Every time I come on here, I keep mentioning this website, but the website needs to be updated today. It needs to be accurate with information, especially during COVID. I'm, I'm just asking, you know, we do have people that are in charge and that are reviewing, um, other things that are going on day to day. Could someone take a moment and review the website and get it updated? Please? That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other individuals for public comment?
Hello?
Hi, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, Sharice Coontz, one forty-one McKinley Place. Uh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, uh, actually I have two comments, uh, one regarding, uh, the resolution thirty-four, three forty-three twenty. And I know, um, there was a lot of, um, discussion and praise about the, uh, the sixteen bidders that, um, or sixteen properties that were bid. I just want to remind everyone that every investor that invests in Plainfield by buying, buying the property, specifically the multifamily properties, do not always have the best interest of Plainfield at heart. I will tell you that, um, some of these folks that are buying these properties in Plainfield are slum lords. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that, that you guys are aware of that, cause I have one that bought a property next door to me. And when I heard that there was, um, sixteen properties, uh, that went up for auction, I went to that list just to make sure that he wasn't on that list. And thank God he wasn't. Um, that's my first thing, you know, so, you know, e- every investor that invests in Plainfield is not investing in Plainfield for Plainfield's best interests. It's just easy money. So please just keep that in mind. Um, also, you know, we're, we're expecting a snowstorm on Wednesday. Um, not sure if the city is prepared, if they'll be doing some pre-treating tomorrow, but, you know, I know we have not had any snow in a while, so I would hope that we will be prepared for whatever is to come to us on Wednesday. Um, thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. And points well taken.
Council President, could, would we maybe wanna have, uh, Director Dabney just speak to the, the snowstorm prep, cause last year we got off pretty easy with, without it, people may be a little out of, uh, out of practice in town. So maybe giving them a, a little update on what we're doing might make them feel better.
Yeah, I don't wanna interrupt the public comment. I'll let Mr. Spear speak, but at the end, uh, Mr. Dabney, if you wanna chime in, that'll be appreciated. Will do. Mr. Spear?
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Jim Spear, six oh nine Belvedere Avenue. I just wanna, uh, thank the administration for, um, reversing or looking into reversing the one-way street on East Fifth Street. Um, but that, this continues the progress in that area. You know, the mayor had the fe- the, the fences, the chain link fences in the city hall taken down. Now we're getting the street reversed, which is gonna help traffic flow there so much. It just will make so much more sense to have that one-way go all the way to Watchon. But the next step is, and this is for the Director of Public Works, is to replace the lighting in the city hall parking lot there along, along Fifth. Um, those lights that exist now are not allowed in our ordinance. On- once we get back to, um, applicants for the land use boards coming to city hall again, um, when they apply, they're forced to put in a certain type of light, but then here, us, we, the city are breaking the rule. Uh, it's probably not the time of year to, to spend that money, but I just wish you'd all put it into the future planning to replace those illegal lights in the city hall. If, if the next time you go into the lot, if you notice at night, there's one, there's one light that faces east and just lights up the house, you know, right on the border there, that the poor folks in that house can't even, uh, put their shades up at, at night because, uh, it, it's all lit up. Uh, that, that concludes, um, my little speech, but, uh, I just wanted to wish you all a happy holidays at this special time of year. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mrs. Spear.
There is no one else with their hand raised currently?
Okay, thank you, Director, uh, Dabney?
I'm sorry, um, someone else raised their hand.
Oh, okay, we'll go back to them. Mrs. Popper, name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening, Jennifer Popper, uh, eight sixteen Dixie Lane. I just have a quick question, following up on the preparation for, um, the potential snowstorm. Is there going to be a cooling center or warming center identified?
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll wrap that into the, uh, responses from the director. All right, the floor is your, Director Dabney.
Yes, okay. As far as the storm, the snowstorm, yes, we are ready, prepared to go. And of course, you know, we can't beat Mother Nature till she's finished. Uh, we have thirty-five pieces of equipment, you know, snow fighting equipment ready to go. Uh, we have six hundred and twenty-five tons of salt, rock salt, are ready to go. All equipment has been calibrated, uh, lubricated, et cetera, and is ready to go. So, you know, we'll do what we have to do and, and just fight the storm accordingly as it comes. As the snow comes, we'll be ready to push and plow until everything's down to black top and when it ends. So we're prepared for that.
Uh, chime in on the warming centers, if you've heard of those.
On the warming centers? Well, I, I guess right now with, with, with COVID, we'll look at everything, how we address that. I mean, we do have the senior center, we will probably try to use if something comes about with terms of someone needs a warming center. That's something I will go with the OEM coordinator, we'll look into, uh, to address that.
Okay.
Yeah. Lastly, I guess as far as lighting in the whole parking lot, that's the goal of the maze. We've been looking to do everything. We paved the lot, we striped it, and that's our goal. And with the funds available, we definitely wanna put new lighting in a, in the, uh, parking lot, LED lighting, wow.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think that's it, folks. Um...
Council President?
Yes, Mayor, would you like...
Yeah, before you move to adjourn, just a quick, a few brief, uh, comments, um, pertaining to COVID nineteen and what we've seen in the city of Plainfield. Um, those of you who get the daily update would notice that we have divided the update into two sections. One from the beginning of the pandemic, which started around mid-March to September, and we view that as the first phase through the end of September. And through the end of September, we had two thousand four hundred and sixty-five positive cases, which when divided by six and a half months was like three hundred and seventy-nine cases per month. As of the latest report, we now have some thirteen hundred and sixty-six cases from October first through the, um, eleventh. And when divided by the two and a half months, we have five hundred and forty-six cases per month. So that gives you an idea how much more this infection is spreading across our city. And we went from a positivity rate of about five point three percent in the early parts of the pandemic to roughly seven point four... point four percent. So I would just like to encourage all of you and all of our residents to take all of the necessary precautions. And we will be looking at resuming some of our live sessions that we've had with, you know, the residents as well as with ministers and other interested parties in the city. But we just cannot take things for granted and let our guards down because as it stands right now, we are in a worse position with this virus than we were, you know, six months ago. We are having lots of testing across the city. The county has been a great partner. The city has procured the services of private vendors as well. And so we are supplementing the testing that's being done by the county as well as the testing that's being done by some private entities such as the, the, the um, the pharmacies and so on and so forth. So, you know, as you look to celebrate the holidays, please minimize your contact with people outside of your home and just be extremely careful and cautious and continue to practice all of the protocols that we're all familiar with. And so I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we enter or look to enter into twenty twenty-one. And I hope and pray that we would see the kinds of improvements that we all are hoping for with the, with the, the vaccination that started in the last few days. And so let us continue to do all of our best to keep our city safe. And we should also let our constituents know that we still are providing services at city hall, although on a very modified schedule, employees are still at work, but we are also practicing those CDC protocols that will keep our employees safe, keep the residents who need to use the services of city hall safe. And so I just appeal to you to let us all do the same in order to keep our city safe. And may God bless each and every one of you and happy holidays.
Thanks for that, Mayor. All right. And also just a shout out to all of our first responders, the people on the front lines, uh, the nurse practitioners, the doctors, uh, our police and fire. Pretty much everybody is, is, not everybody, but many of us are, are, have been forced to resume back to duty, which makes this uh, portion of uh, this phase of the pandemic particularly more deadly than before when many of us had uh, more leverage and leeway to work uh, from home. But a, a, a lot of us are now going back into the office where, where, where we're coming in contact with many more people than uh, the first phase of the pandemic. You know, so I urge everybody, just wear your masks, you know. Let the mask be a thing, get different masks, decorative masks, coordinate them with your outfits, whatever you need to do. The, the, these are, these are the things that are really helping to, to not spread to each other. Cause we know more about this virus now. It's not as much about touching surfaces, but more about it being airborne. So we want to prevent the mist as you talk to individuals from going out and absorbing other people's uh, mist. Uh, so wear your mask. It's, it's something that's gonna, that gonna help. And, and for the young folks, you know, those are the ones that probably need to hear it the most because they know that if they get the virus, most likely they'll be fine and recover. But we want to not spread this to our loved ones, uh, the, the ones who are more uh, vulnerable. So please be considerate uh, of them when you go out to make sure that you don't bring something back uh, to, to our vulnerable population. Uh, so everybody should, uh, needs to do their part. So, thank you. Continue to persevere. This is our last meeting of the year, so happy holidays. We'll see you all in the next year. Uh, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.